We'll call the meeting, uh, special meeting.
A regular meeting?
Regular meeting. Special was yesterday, irregular today. Uh, of May twentieth, twenty fifteen to order. Roll call, please.
Veronica Frankel.
Present.
Howard Rosenberg.
Present.
Lisa Roggerio.
Present.
Nick Smith.
Excuse you'll be late, he said.
Angela Taylor.
I am here.
John Mayer.
Here.
And Barbara McClory. We have a quorum.
Okay. Could you stand for the pledge, please? Bob, could you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I have no, uh, notices of change in it or anything.
I so moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signal. So Carrie, let the record show unanimously. Public comment, comments from the public are invited at this time on topics not specifically addressed elsewhere in the agenda. A yellow citizens card should be filled out and submitted to the board before speaking during public comment section. Pursuant to the board policy, ninety thirty-four meetings of Board of Trustees, all persons are limited to three minutes per item. The time limit may be altered at the discretion of the President of the Board. The Board is precluded from discussing or acting on items raised by public comment. We are not, which are not already on the agenda. The Board of Trustees may impose reasonable restrictions on public comment pursuant to NRS two four one point oh three five. Correspondence or written material submitted to the public comment, for public comment by the general public, shall be attached to the minutes of the meeting. And so if you wanna talk, you gotta fill out one of these cards. We do have someone that would like to address the board. Shannon Cullen, or Cullen, or... Welcome.
Good afternoon, sirs and madams. As I'm sure most of you know, I've already emailed some correspondence to the board, including some pictures, not for an agenda item on this specific agenda. However, I do want to make a general comment about board policy that is to be adopted or revised, coming up for a vote, I believe, next month. The board policy is four five zero five, which is a policy that specifically addresses employees with the school district. My name is Shannon Cullen. As I was introduced, I am a school psychologist with the district. Some of the speech and some of the things that I would like to say unfortunately are limited both contractually and legally by certain other agreements. But I will try to address the specifics in a sort of a general sense. My concern with this board policy that is to be adopted is that as a recent outmember of the LGBT population and is now being with the district for four years basically at this point, working at different schools within this district, I've seen many students who are of the LGBT population who have been harassed, discriminated against, and bullied not only by their peers but by staff members. The reason I bring this up is because recently, within the last school year, I displayed items within my office as a school psychologist to basically let students know who are in the LGBT population that they can come to me as a person who is safe and be, and respected, and that they too will be safe and respected in that environment. As my primary rules, role as a school psychologist is to work with special education students, write reports, collaborate with other personnel in the school district. As that is my primary role, a secondary role is to help students and help school districts in crisis intervention. However, it's also important to recognize that because of the incidences that I've seen, I want to be a voice for those students and let them know, not simply through word of mouth, but through by action, that there is a place and a person that they can come to if they are feeling harassed or discriminated against. How that pertains to board policy four five zero five, as I'm sure you have been advised by legal counsel, both old and new, that you're hired, that you hired independently, there are certain limits that can be imposed legally on freedom of speech within the school district, but I just want the board to be advised that some of the language in that proposed policy can be interpreted as vague, and it's important that students who are in that minority in the district be aware that there's someone that they could come to for support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and giving us your opinion. We appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? No one else? Okay, then we'll move on to consent agenda item, approval of the consent items two point oh two through two point oh nine. Are there any that anyone wants to pull? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signal. Carrie's unanimously, let the record show. Okay, moving on to budget items. Everybody's been waiting with bated breath on this. The first item is three point oh one, a public hearing on fiscal year twenty fifteen to sixteen tentative budget and possible approval of the fiscal year two fifteen, sixteen final budget for possible action. Tom and Mike are going to do this presentation.
President Mayor, Interim Superintendent Davis, members of the board. For the record, I'm Tom Sisinski, the Chief Financial Officer for the school district. And with me is our Budget Director, Mike Schroeder. As you know, we've been through quite a process in terms of the budget, starting back before, in twenty fourteen, moving forward with budget updates typically on every board meeting, through a budget workshop, through two town hall meetings, through the adoption of the tentative budget, and now we're at the point where we have to meet our next compliance item, which is the public hearing on the, the budget itself, and that day is today. And we also have a recommendation to adopt the budget as final, and we'll go through the reasons why, some we've already discussed with you, but we'll remind you what that process is. Mike's gonna start the process off by taking you through a PowerPoint that kinda reminds all of us of where we've been. I will update you on the six-hour hearing that I sat through on Saturday with Lindsay Anderson to address some of the things that we've been talking with you about, but Mike and I'll probably say several times during this discussion today that the legislature's work is incomplete at this point. Not to say that they're not doing their job, they are doing their job, they're just, we're just because of the process ahead of where they're at, and so we'll remind you of that several times and, and as we go throughout this process. So at this juncture, I think I'll turn it over to Mike and he'll, he'll walk you through our PowerPoint presentation.
I think we're at the point of thirteen days in counting.
Yes, or it could go overtime, too.
Oh, yeah.
Good afternoon, President Mayor, Superintendent Davis, and board members, and welcome, Mr. Shu. Long time no see. This is our tentative, uh, hearing on the tentative budget. It's required by law at this meeting. You can make changes to the tentative budget, which we approved back on April fourteenth, I believe, and adopt a final budget, which is what we're recommending due to the timeline. The legislature is still in session. There's a lot of unknowns about the budget. We're not gonna know those in time, probably if the legislature concludes their business on June first. We have to file a final budget by June eighth. We have no board meeting in between that date, other than this hearing and maybe on the twenty-sixth. If we find out information based on what the legislature approves, we're not gonna be able to compile that and just sort through it and figure out exactly what it is in a couple of days and write up a board item and get it to you. So we get thirty days to file an amended final budget after the close of the legislative session. Those are the reasons why we're basically saying, let's recommend some changes to be made to the tentative budget, pass that right now, wait till the legislature ends and figure out what happened due to their actions and file an amended final budget. And at this meeting, the public can be heard, so there, this is at least the law's attempt to allow the public to be heard in the budget process, although we have multiple town hall meetings and budget updates, and the public can come at any time. We're gonna go through, I'll try to really pick up where we left off on the tentative budget. We've kinda been progressing. We had a preliminary budget, a budget workshop. We went through our budget in detail at that point, discussed some of the additions we had made to the budget, why we are at the point we're at, and we adopted a tentative budget with a twenty-six point seven million dollar deficit. So since that point in time, let me get to here. We haven't really changed our revenues from the tentative budget. There is one change, the local school support tax, the big red pie, we're raising by about six point three million, and this is due to, uh, uh, final revenue projections that are provided to us from the State Department of Taxation. Now that doesn't give us six point three million dollars more to spend, it just gets offset by the DSA. It's part of the Nevada plan, the per pupil calculation. So it increases the local school support tax, but then the DSA portion goes down by the equivalent amount. So no new money there, just a reclassification. I know recently in the paper, City of Reno, City of Sparks, Washoe County, they all seem to have all this new money to spend, and if you look at our categories, I mean, our ad valorem tax is going up about four percent, sales tax is going up over nine percent, the government services tax is going up over eleven percent, but that DSA part is actually going down. So that's where we always say that the state kinda determines our fate, and that's why we have to wait for them to finish their process. They're really factoring in all those other sources of revenue when they look at what they're gonna support, so those kinda get mitigated in this whole process and somewhat taken away. Another major contributor to the fact that we don't have as much revenue as we had the prior years, that the CSR waivers due to sunset, in the prior year, we were able to take seven point six million dollars of CSR funding and help in the general fund. So overall, our revenues are down about two million dollars as compared to the prior year. If anybody has any questions on this particular slide, I'd be happy to answer them. All right, thank you. Going backwards. And once again, we're talking about the general fund 'cause it's major, our major operating fund, it's pretty much our day-to-day activities. We have other funds and, for accounting reasons, we kinda keep track of different types of activities and what we call funds, and it's required by law, it's required by accounting, too, but it's written into our laws. Same with these expenditures, they're put into categories that are uniform throughout the state, somewhat uniform throughout the nation, so you can compare numbers. Total general fund expenditures are projected to be four hundred fifty-two million right now. This is about two point eight million dollars more than what was put in the tentative budget, and we talked about that at our last budget update, some of the items that we are recommending to be added to the budget, and we'll get into those a little later here. Our major categories, as you can see, is the big blue slice, which is regular instruction, that's normal classroom instruction, it involves teachers, aides, assistants, textbooks, instructional supplies, those type of things. We also have other instructional categories, special instruction kinda down to their lower right, vocational education, the special instruction is really our GT funding, vocational is our occupational education funds that go towards those type of classes. Other instruction, most of that is really our ELL funding, and co-curriculars, athletics and co-curricular activities. And there's a big chunk over here to the upper right, transfers and contingency, forty million dollars, a big portion of that, about thirty-five million of that, is a transfer to our special education fund, and that, the majority of that naturally provides for education of special needs students. So when you combine these type of instructional areas, we're spending close to sixty percent of our budget on instructional related expenses, so these are direct for the children. Down below at the bottom, you see a green slice and a blue slice, student support and instructional staff support. These are, these are areas that indirectly support students and staff that are teaching the students. Those are about ten percent of our budget, so when you take our direct instruction and our indirect, uh, support for students, it's about seventy percent of our budget is really spent towards students. And we also have categories for general administration, which is the board, the superintendent, area superintendent, that's about one point five percent of our budget. School administration, which in school includes principals, assistant principals, secretaries, clerks, and, uh, some operational supplies there, is about seven point five percent. Central support, it's business office, human resources, IT department, print shop, all these supporting areas of the district, about five percent there. Operations and maintenance is a big portion of what we spend, eleven percent, and a lot of that has to do with just utilities that we pay on our buildings. Then last, we got student transportation, obviously, our bus drivers, mechanics, and operational supplies to run our transportation department. So, uh, if you look at our expenditures in total and compare it to the prior year, we've actually added about seventeen million dollars in expense, and that's for roll-ups, PERS change, we add holiday health insurance premiums that, uh, we basically saved money in the prior year, we have to restore that this year because we're using up our reserves and our health insurance fund. The textbook waiver we had, we took two million dollars out of our textbooks, we have to restore that, and then there's some utility increases. So even though we added seventeen million in costs, we've offset that by about fourteen million in savings. We revised our OPEB calculation, so we're saving money on our annual required contribution that we have to make towards that. We have turnover and salary and benefit savings, uh, we do an ESIP program that helps us save money. And then we had a little increase in our special ed unit funding, which helps us offset expenditures here. So even though we added seventeen million in expense, we're offsetting that by fourteen million in reduction, so the net increase when we were at the tentative budget was about three million dollars more in expense. What we're proposing right now is to add another two point eight to that, which I'll get to here in a second. So overall, we're adding about six million dollars more in expense than we had in the prior year.
Mike, excuse me. Does, uh, the power company give us any kind of a deal? Do we get any kind of a reduction?
As to who we are?
Yes, and what we do.
Not, not in particular.
I think they should, don't you?
They, they, they provide a lot of programs, a lot of these photovoltaic and, uh, windows and lighting systems, they're, they're providing credits and things, they're really promoting that, and that's saved us a lot of money.
All right, okay.
They did provide some of the funding that allowed us to install those, just to supplement what Mike was saying, so, but not just reductions in our bill per se.
I was looking for something like donate the whole thing.
I'll get ahold of Mr. Buffett, who owns Nevada Energy.
Yes, tell them that I suggested it.
And at last, there were, there were some smaller additions that we made, departments put in requests, and essentially what, what they'd done is just kind of, uh, take things out of their budget because they had other items that they felt were more important to be in their budget. In the tentative budget, that was about four hundred sixty thousand dollars. These are budget neutral because they found offsets for those. What we're proposing in the final budget, there's about six hundred thousand more of those type of things, but we found offsets for them, so once again, those are budget neutral. And this next slide is really just taking that four hundred fifty million we were talking about and just carving it up in a different manner. As you can see, about eighty-eight percent of our budget is really being spent on salaries and benefits. We're a very labor-intensive organization, and it doesn't leave a lot left over for other purposes, and when you look at those other purposes, I mean, thirteen million, almost fourteen million is going towards utilities, about three percent of our budget, and instructional materials are obviously important to the classroom and replenishing textbooks and supplies. Licenses and assessments, uh, that's how we operate our programs, our school accountability systems, that's how we test and assess students. So there's not really a lot of wiggle room when you look at our budget, the majority of our money is spent on salary and benefits, so when we're talking about any reductions, it's kinda hard to ignore that area of our budget. So when we have the tentative budget, when you take these revenues we're talking about and the expenditures, we're left with about a twenty-six point seven million dollar gap, and that's what we've talked about all through the tentative budget. And another way to look at that is say, well, how, how did we get there? Really, the majority of this is really from fiscal year fifteen. We had a deficit at that point in time. We decided to use twenty-one million of reserves, we call it fund balance, so it's, it's really like a savings account, and you're able to use that, but those expenditures continue on, and you've used your savings account to pay for them, and your savings account hasn't been replenished, so now you're in the hole. So anytime we use reserves or fund balance to balance our budget, you're gonna see that same type of hit in the next year. Included, well, we have to pay for roll-ups for our employees, and there's a PERS increase, and these are supposed to be built into the DSA and supposedly offset by these increases in other outside revenues, but as you can see, they're, they're falling a little short there, so we've been trying to work with them to get that restored, and there is some good news on that front, tentatively, until it all gets approved, we won't know for sure, but that's part of the problem there. Once again, the sunset of the CSR waivers, about seven point six million, restoring health insurance, holiday premium, and sunset of the textbook waiver, so those things all add up to about forty million dollars, and then, as I mentioned before, we found some offsets for a lot of this stuff, so that's how we got to the twenty-six point seven million. Now what we're proposing here in the, is recommended changes to the tentative budget so you can adopt a final budget, is a list of items we talked about at our last budget update. The first one's college preparative initiative, credit recovery, there's some grant-funded positions we wanted to move to the general fund that are critical to our strategic plan, family graduation advocates, re-engagement specialists, high school, altater school within the school positions. We talked about those at the last board meeting, including it in your board narrative. There's a pretty good description of all those, I don't really want to read through that, it's like three or four pages, but I hope you got a chance to read that and answer any questions you might have had.
I had a, I have a quick question. I just, I heard that the TIF three grant may have been continued, or we may be receiving the TIF grant, I just wanted to clarify the status of that.
Okay.
In total, at the same, it's, it's been continued? And it's at the same level as it was before?
All right, so, so if we had the TIF three positions in here, we wouldn't have to do that.
It's one year only?
We'll take it.
Yeah, see, cha-ching, there's a little, a little budget savings, okay?
Getting better all the time.
Okay, and since, and there, there's been some other activity in the district that we really have to recognize in our final budget, we created an Assistant Director Grant Program Compliance, so that's a new position to ensure compliance with various federal and state grants. Special education reorganization, we've been looking at that, we hired an additional position, a lot of that cost was offset by a couple of vacant positions, and we, related to that was also a reclass of some of our chief officer positions. We have other strategic initiatives, once again, these are the budget neutral ones I was talking about before, about six hundred thousand, that's really related to our middle school initiative, increasing advanced placement stipends and providing for exam costs for some of the kids. A screener for gifted and talented. We have some first generation initiative and Indian education items that we wanted to increase funding for, but once again, we found offsets for those either through existing budgets or probably a turnover savings that we feel will happen. So that adds about two point eight million to the original twenty-six point seven million, so right now, we're asking you to approve these changes for the final budget and file the final budget with a twenty-nine point five million dollar deficit. the final budget with a twenty-nine point five million dollar deficit. And we don't really want to leave you out there hanging. So behind the scenes, we're doing our due diligence to try to identify if we, if we have to solve this riddle, depending on what happens at the legislature, what are some of our options? And we went over these at the last budget update. So this is the same list we were talking about then. And once again, there's a lot of question marks, the DSA amount, class size reduction waivers, textbook waivers, things like that. Even a lot of these categorical funding items that the legislature is proposing, depending on the detail, i- if they're approved, then there could be a means to kind of offset some of our current expenditures, but it's hard to know exactly what those are at this point in time. Tom's going to give us, give you an update on where we stand at that and when we're done with this part of it.
I have a question. You know, usually the legislature puts in a percentage for raises in each year of the biennium. Is that, has that, your meeting, six hours worth of meeting, was that discussed?
Yeah, yes.
And what was the outcome of that?
The outcome is they put no COLAs and negotiated raises in for fiscal year sixteen or seventeen.
So nothing's been added to their budget?
No.
For raises of personnel?
Yes.
Just, just rollups on salary schedules?
Rollups, like step increases and that, but nothing else.
Correct.
But that's not final, they may come back.
They could still change that, yes.
Yes, Lisa.
Thank you, President Mayor. So I have a question. So are there any unfilled positions? So for example, we've had some open positions, are we seeing any savings there that can help with the offset of some of these? Can you talk a little bit about that? Can you show me where that?
The opening fund balance, FY fifteen savings, a lot of what's in there is current year vacancies or turnover savings. We are not going to spend that money this year, so it's kind of building up our savings account, so we roll that into next year to help mitigate this budget deficit.
Okay, so we're counting for that?
Yeah, and just to take it a step further, one of the things that we implemented working with interim superintendent Davis is we put a, a hiring, I'll call it slowdown, meaning that every non-teaching position has to be scrutinized to see if we can do without it. That's always the first question that we ask, and if we can't do without it, why, why can't we do without it? And so we haven't stopped any positions from being hired, but we certainly have slowed them down, which means we've generated savings by doing that. So we're scrutinizing every position, especially non-teaching position in the district, so.
Usually, you know, people that retire, I'm sorry.
I just said it's a committee of chiefs that are involved.
Correct, yeah, they won't let us make the decision by ourselves.
You wouldn't fill anything.
Good lord. But usually though...
If they let Mike and I do it, no, we wouldn't hire anybody.
Don't need it.
But usually, what happens is these, people retire, they're at higher salary than the replacement. And so what you're saying, if I understand you without, well, I, I think I'm understanding what you're saying, is that that savings then goes into the closing fund balance.
Yeah, a portion of that is accounted for upfront due to the people who go out on ESIP. So we're recognizing those savings as part of the budget. We're not necessarily recognizing other people who aren't part of that program.
Because they haven't been identified?
Yeah, it's kind of difficult to know who's going and who's coming back and what, what the replacement is for the person who left, so.
But you, but you know that there's fifty going out on ESIP, but you don't know the other people that are going to go out without ESIP? So there can be a savings that you, you can't calculate, but that savings will go into the Indian fund balance?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes?
I just wanted a little bit more information. You mentioned the committee, I, I prefer to it in other organizations as a vacancy review committee, I don't know what you call it, but...
I think we call it that.
BRC.
Yeah, we call it that.
And so I was just kind of curious, at some point, maybe not today, but I just would be interested in learning more about that, particularly the criteria that are used to evaluate the position's importance or significance or necessity.
Sure, we can send you basically what we send each person who's submitting a position, so.
Great, thank you. And I think the general premise starts with it cannot impact students.
Okay, so we've kind of talked about our general fund, which is our major operating fund. We also have other funds, a building and sites fund, capital projects funds, which at this point in time, we're dwindling what we have there. Hoping to issue bonds, but that's going to be several years down the road. Special education fund, class size reduction fund, special revenue funds, which is really state, federal, local type of grants that are recognized in there, we can only use those funds for specific purposes. Debt service fund is where we pay off all our existing bonds, plus some of our bus leases and other medium-term financing items for retrofits, energy retrofits, things like that. Internal service funds, we're basically self-insured for health insurance, workers' comp, and property and casualty insurance. And the enterprise fund is really our nutrition services fund and provides for our nutrition services and lunch program. These are all summarized on this all districts fund summary. Basically, general fund, we're showing, we're twenty-nine point five million in the hole at that red area in the first column. The special revenue fund, that includes our special education fund for this purpose. That's, we're actually making a change to that, there's about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars being added to that. It's part of the two point eight million I'm talking about that we're adding, but it, it changes that fund over there, and that's related to that special ed reorganization. Debt service fund, we're also making some changes there. We did a bond refunding, so that impacts our debt service schedule for next year. So we're recognizing that change, plus just a change in the opening fund balance. Then the last column, enterprise fund, our nutrition services fund. At the time we did our tentative budget, we hadn't, we had an RFP out for services for nutrition. That's been settled, we're using Aramark again, and at this point in time, they're, basically, they write up a guaranteed profit into their contract, it's about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, so this is recognizing that change there. Every time we submit a budget, the Department of Taxation reviews it for compliance, they'll send us a letter if there's things that they have questions about or they believe we're not in compliance with. For the last four years, we've submitted the budget with these deficits. I mean, I just write in a line item and say, we have a deficit, but we're very transparent in that, we tell you guys, we have a deficit. When we do a final budget, we have to balance the budget, okay? That's a requirement of law. This is in every one of our documents that I send to you every time we talk about the budget. So they're just saying, this, this is going to have to be resolved, either change it on the schedule or offer some type of explanation letter, which at this point in time, that's how we'll respond to this, is that our intention is to resolve it after the legislature ends. We just don't know what those, what that resolution is right now because we don't know what they're going to pass. And there's a lot of reasons why we do it this way. If we file a budget and we say, geez, we're all in balance, we don't have an issue, well, why the heck are we up there at the legislature complaining, you know? So it's, some of this is the way they want to see it, and some of it is the way I think it should be. And it's not like it's not balanced, this is our way of balancing. They might think we need to balance it a different way, but to me, it'd just be kind of a phony way of doing it. Okay, I'll take twenty-nine million out of the instruction category. Does that mean we're going to lay off a bunch of teachers? No. We haven't resolved it, and it's hard to make difficult decisions and scare people off with difficult decisions when we don't really know what those decisions have to be. So that's really, really the reason behind why we do it this way, and I just have to let you know that we got this letter, and we'll be responding to it, basically explaining it that way. So, and our intention is to resolve it when we do the amended final budget.
Let me just add that we had a conference call, we, Mike and I, had a conference call with our State Department of Taxation representative, Kelly Langley, yesterday, who sent the letter to us, and she fully understands where we are, where, and at the end of the day, when we file the amended final budget, we will be in compliance in terms of meeting that balanced budget. So, so we felt it was very important to update you that we got the letter and that we had a direct conversation with, with the Department of Taxation.
And this is just to say, we've got a lot of detailed budget information out there on our website. If you go to the district's website, it's pretty easily accessible, very detailed by department, very detailed, summarized by executive cabinet member, very summarized by fund, program and function. It's carved up a lot of different ways, so it's just a good way to see how we're spending our money and what we're proposing to spend it on.
And you're starting the rollout of the active budget?
Interactive budget, yeah. And we're actually meeting with interim superintendent Davis, I think, tomorrow. And then we've got some scheduled meetings with, with groups of the, of the board to go through that. So yeah, I think you'll be very excited to see the product.
So probably the start of next fiscal year, July one, Joe, my neighbor, can go on his computer and see in detail the budget.
Probably not July one, because what we want to do is get it updated for fiscal year sixteen information, and we're not even going to know that.
So you're going to hold off until the legislature finalizes?
If the legislature ends, we can go right to that timeline, because if the legislature ends June first, we get thirty days after that, which I think puts it at either June twenty-third roughly to have a board meeting and summarize what just happened at that point in time. You guys have to finalize that budget, and then we can update the interactive budget for those numbers.
Well, I'm really excited about this. I think you guys, you're leading the way, you know, this is something that every local government, every, everybody should have available to see the budget and so forth, and combine that with open checkbook. I mean, if you, if you wanted to hide money, you couldn't do it. So I think it's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, you gotta have, that's right, Mr. Wolford.
So we've kind of gone over everything about the tentative budget and what we're proposing to make the changes for. These changes are also detailed on the schedules that are part of your packet, and our recommendation is to incorporate those changes into the budget and approve a final budget.
So you're asking us right now to...
I think we have to open it up for public comment.
Yeah, we have to open up a hearing, but I want to know, you're asking us to approve the final budget today? And this is nothing new, we've done it ever since I've been on the board, I think, and, but that's your recommendation?
Correct. Did you want me to update you on the legislative part, or did you want to open the public? It, it doesn't matter either way.
Well, I think it's good for them to know what happened on Saturday.
Sure, okay, I guess the indication is you want me to give you an update, so I'm going to give you six hours worth of testimony in less than five or ten minutes.
Well, you...
Tracy only gave me five or ten minutes.
You better be careful, because I watched all six hours.
So did I, because I was there, and so was Lindsay. So, so as, as we started out the conversation, again, this work is not complete, and again, I'm not trying to be, I mean, that's, the legislature is where they're at, and so, but I think the most important message I can start out with is our voice is being heard, and we're very appreciative. I think the legislators would say, they have heard us, they're making some adjustments, and I'll touch on some of those here. We still need to see how that actually flushes through formulas, how those categorical funds will work, but at the end of the day, the governor has proposed a new revenue package, tax package, fee package, you can define it whatever you want it to be, but that, that process needs to get through in order to, to fund, he's put forth over eight hundred million dollars towards education, half of which is the sunsetting taxes, and I'll touch on those in a second, the other half is tied to categorical funds or grant funds or however you want to describe them. So we need to see how all that is going to work in our budgets. That's why we're recommending to you today to approve the budget as we know it today, because we've got to get more definitive answers on what's going to actually make it through and what's actually not going to, so. So with that as a background, I'll kind of try and walk you through six hours of Saturday, and, and not six hours. So I'll start out by saying that one of the things that we talked to you about and we built the budget on is the sunsetting LSST, the point three-five percent increase that's been now in place for, I think, four fiscal years, Mike? And so, as the governor said in his state of the state, this is something that our state's gotten pretty used to, and so they have Senate Bill four eighty-three whereby this is being recommended to be made permanent in, in the district's budgeting practices. So that looks like it's moving in a very favorable direction. Again, we built the budget with that understanding that that would happen, so whether it be continued on for two more years or made permanent, one way or the other, we built the budget that way. So we took a leap of faith, and it looks like it's the right leap of faith. The other part of the normal budget has been the IP one room tax revenues, which generates over three hundred million dollars in the statewide education budget. That one is not being made permanent, but it's being recommended to be extended in its current format for the next two years. So that one's being extended two years, and they'll have to take action on what they want to do with that again in two years. When we started out the discussion on the budget with you, there was a discussion of fiscal year sixteen, the year that we're presenting the budget to you, where the DSA would actually go down by seven dollars. In the next year, it was, it's scheduled to increase by forty dollars, so some adjustments that the, the committee, the two committees, the committee, the Senate Committee on Finance and the Assembly Committee on of Ways and Means or on Ways and Means, has recommended that the DSA be increased by one dollar in fiscal year seventeen and by eighteen dollars in fiscal year, let's see, one dollar in fiscal year sixteen and eighteen dollars in fiscal year seventeen. So increasing that forty dollar increase in the second year of the biennium to fifty-eight dollars, so that's good news. The one dollar increase is good news, it's not a huge number, but it's good news, but there's addition, additional information on the DSA, and I'll get to that when we get to CSR. They're also recommending that hold harmless, which is a provision, if our enrollment's going down, be adjusted from a two-year look to a one-year look. So it's still a, a, a safety net, but with a tighter window. As President Mayor had me answer earlier, there are no COLAs or cost of living adjustments or negotiated salary bumps built into the budget for the next two years. That's, that's a challenge, because we negotiate contracts, and so we have to work with our bargaining units and try and find a happy median, and so that will be a challenge. So moving on to CSR, as you recall, we, there were three things that we were focused on with the legislature. One was the DSA, the second two were the waivers, the class size reduction waiver and the textbook waiver. So recognizing that CSR had been a tool that had helped us balance our budget the last several fiscal years, and then seeing that it was going away, we had raised a concern, Mike previously pointed out, seven point six million dollar concern for us. And so what the legislature has decided to do is, is change the ratios as they relate to grades one, two, and three. So grades one and two, the mandated ratio was sixteen to one, they are now recommending an increase of one student and making that seventeen to one. And in third grade, the mandated ratio was nineteen to one, they are recommending a ratio of twenty to one. And so the savings that they can generate for that is going to allow them to add approximately forty dollars on the per pupil amount in fiscal year sixteen, which would carry over to fiscal year seventeen. So that's good news. What that forty dollars means for us has to funnel through the DSA formula, and all seventeen districts won't just get forty dollars. It has, it could be a little bit more for some, it could be a little bit less for others. Typically, for Clark and Washoe, it tends to be a little bit less, because we're the two big, two big districts in the state. So, so we, that's why Mike and I are saying, we don't even know what that forty dollars looks like just yet. It may not be forty dollars for us, so we, we can't make educated assumptions, and we don't want to put you in a bad position by doing that. But again, good news, the one dollar I previously talked about, plus an addition, and even that one dollar doesn't necessarily mean a dollar for us, it could be something less than a dollar, it could be something more. So anyway, those two good pieces of news, yes, please.
How does that relate then to the, the eighteen dollars for fiscal year seventeen? Same thing, it has to go through the formula?
Yes.
So it may not look like fifty-eight or whatever?
Yeah, eighteen could be something slightly less than eighteen, something slightly more, just depending on the district and how the statewide formula works. So that's why we can't say eighteen dollars times the number of students we get, that's what we get, because it doesn't work that way.
The, the state takes the, well, the statewide per pupil amount, that's what goes into the Nevada plan. We, we end up getting about ninety-eight point three percent of the statewide per pupil amount, so.
So we'll be, we, we could, we could, we could... So we'll be, we, we could, we could potentially have up to $41 per kid or at?
Yeah, it'll probably be about 40 right now.
Look, 98.3, that's an accountant for you, isn't it? Or up to $58 or whatever that 98.3%.
For the next fiscal year.
Correct. So those are two great pieces of news. But again, the legislature has to take final action on that. So again, we didn't want to jump ahead of them, and that's why, again, we're recommending you adopt as we know today. So any other question? And so with CSR, let me end just by saying the waiver comes to an end. We believe, and we're still verifying, that those new ratios will be the new ratios moving forward, but we need confirmation.
That's still to be determined.
Oh, is that still to be determined?
Yes, I just found that out. They're still, that's not going to be written into law. They'll probably address it again next biennium. So this isn't something that's going away. If they went back to the 16 and the 19, then we're still going to have issues then.
But for, for the, for this next two years, this next biennium, these next two years, then they took the, adjusting the ratios as a way to offset the deficit in the DSA?
Offset the funding cliff.
Yeah.
And we're, we're still trying, if, if that is approved, we're still trying to figure out, okay, how does that impact our CSR? Because there's a lot of CSR implications that we have to sit down and work out. So it might add 40 bucks here, but it doesn't mean we're going to get 40 bucks per kid, because we've got some other assumptions that we're making in the budget. Because of this ratio change now, it could impact us there.
Does that relate at all to those other two ratios? The, does that, I mean, to the textbook ratio?
The textbook waiver?
I mean waiver, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get to that in just a second. So yeah, slightly, yeah, a little bit. Yeah. All right. Well, I'll just go to textbook, since you asked about it. It's a little further down on my list, but I can, I can show you, I can think outside the box. So it's their intent also to end the textbook waiver. Mike and I still have some questions associated with what that exactly means. They think that maybe technically statewide, that the, the number was calculated too high. Mike's been double checking the math on that. We're not quite sure what that means. It could be favorable news in that we don't have to budget quite as much. But again, when you're going through all this technical stuff in, in a six-hour hearing, it's some of those finer details that you can't flush out and we still need to ask some more questions about. But it is their intent to end that waiver. What, what we actually have to budget and get back to budgeting again is still what we're trying to determine. Did you want to add anything else to that?
In 2009, when they had their big budget crisis, they actually cut the requirement in half and they pulled it out and reduced our per pupil amount. So that's why it's less than what we thought it was. But internally, we didn't go in and cut our budget, because a lot of it is our textbook adoption budget. It's our per pupil funding that we give to the schools. So we didn't go in and cut all that in half, because it, those are major cuts. We ended up doing the $2 million portion. So unless we wanted to look at those areas again this time, we, we could go there and say, do we want to reduce it a little? But I'm still finalizing everything and that would be a, something we could propose is part of balancing the budget, but I don't know that we'll make that recommendation. We'll, we'll see.
So moving forward, are we good?
Well, the last part of that is, when, when they did this change in the CSR ratio, whatever savings were, that was beyond that $40 per pupil, they were proposing to put into the CTE program. And that would add about 3.1 million statewide in the first year and about 5.2 million the second year. But once again, all this has to be approved.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification on CSR, Mike. So in terms of special educate?
I, I just said thank you.
Oh, thank you. So in terms of another portion of this 56, the 56 pages is all right here in case you need it. Anyway, yeah. You know, it's 56 pages as they handed, handed it out, and then you had to take a lot of notes, because things were changing on the fly. So the, the document by itself is not a good document to work off of, so I would say that. In terms of special education, Mike worked on a task force in the interim whereby we'll be moving away from a unit, funding a unit is the equivalent of a teacher, and be moving more to a weighted formula, which the goal is to start that process in fiscal year 17. And so, and then they also added an additional $25 million in fiscal year 17. That should provide us some hopeful relief, but again, we need to see the finer details of what that's going to look like. So, and then they, they did increase the funding in terms of overall special education, still using unit funding by $57 in fiscal year 16 and by an additional $58 in fiscal year 17. So, but they still need to work on this student formula process and how that's going to, mechanically going to work. So I, we'd sure like to provide you more details, but again, not all the details are available at this juncture, so.
Yeah, a, a major part of that is maintenance of effort, because we have to spend at least as much as we spent in the prior year when it comes to special education costs. So I think the 25 million, even though it's an increase, all that could end up just going to Clark and everybody else stays the same. You know, until you get into the details and the actual funding, I mean, you can wait it two, two times, but if there's not enough funds to go around, then I think what their intention is to take any of that increase and help the guys who they can and maintain everybody else for maintenance of effort. But we won't know that till they start getting into this.
Now, on this, it hasn't, it, it's connected to the budget, so it doesn't have to have a bill to switch from unit funding to per student or whatever.
I think there's a bill out there that includes this along with the ELL. They're trying to move to a 1.5 weight there and for at risk also.
They'll either roll it into the DSA bill itself or they'll do a supplementary bill. So, and I don't know what that is.
It's a supplementary, do you know, I haven't heard about it.
I don't know, I, I, I don't know, so.
We keep hearing about they.
They, who's they?
I, that's what I want to know. Who makes these decisions? Do they know anything at all about education? I mean, besides being in a classroom where they probably flunked.
So the, the process is the governor rolls out his recommended budget, and so then you, you have 63 legislators, Senate senators and assembly people, and they have committees that work through these education finance pieces. So when we say they, it's typical, as Mike, you'll often hear Mike say, the legislature determines our fate, because they ultimately have to vote on the governor's recommended budget. So, I mean, at, at the end of the day, the governor's recommending things, and sometimes he gets what he wants and sometimes he doesn't. And we're an active part of that discussion as well. We're, that's why Lindsay's there, Lindsay and Scott are there representing us every day. And when they get in trouble, they call Tracy or they call me or they call Kristen or they call Don Hook. It just depends on what the subject matter is. So we're, we're an active participant in this process.
And a lot of the recommendations come from the state superintendents.
All right, that was, that was my next question.
But you guys are being modest, really. This is the first time that I can remember, and I've got a good memory, that all the, like, the superintendent Neil Alco, the CFO in White Pine, people from Clark and the superintendent Alco, you guys all have formed a committee. And that committee has been at work for two years. You know, you, first of all, you, you drafted a letter that you presented to the School Board Association that we modified, you guys modified, and all, all, I'll underline all, counties in the state of Nevada approved of that letter and signed it. And through your guys' effort, it's tremendous. I think when you, you started out, it's a different session, but I think that you keep this rolling and start for next section, the group that you have together, you're going to do wonderful things. I just know it. I, I think you've got a good group of people, and I think it's, it's in the best interest of funding education for our kids, is to have people like Howard said, people like you guys that know what you're talking about and know how to add to and to and stuff like that. And, and you make such a, that letter that you guys presented was right to the money. And, and I've never heard of that before. So you are to be congratulated on your efforts.
Looks like you wanted to jump in.
Well, John pretty much said what I was going to start off saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But a couple of things I just want to say. You know, each district, each county is unique, and there are days where we fight as a whole for education, and there are days where, you know, we have to fight for what we need for our individual districts. So Mike, when you say Clark's going to get all the money, I get a little nervous and I think about the gloves coming on, so be careful about that. But what's nice is that I do believe this year, Tom and Mike did a phenomenal job along with Lindsay of making sure that our voices were heard and also putting us all at the table together with, the districts are very, Clark is very different from Washoe and Washoe's very different from the Rurals, but we all have different, unique needs. But like you said, John, we came together, especially on our top three items. And not only did we write the letter, we joined forces down in Carson City to speak with key lawmakers to ensure that at the finish line, we did get something when we thought we were going to get absolutely nothing. But I think that work goes to say about the collaboration and the work that Lindsay does to drag us from office to office to get what we need. And Tom, you tattooing notes on my hand, so you say this, this and this when you go down there. But just an overall effort from Washoe helped leading the way with the, the finance part in the DSA, so thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
You know, we started off after the election, us talking about the board, if we could just preserve the status quo, we would have been happy. But now we're elated by the work that you guys have done, really. I, I know that I could talk for the rest of the board, because it, it's a major, major step that I've never seen before.
May I suggest that we stop this, they'll want to raise. And we ain't got no money.
Well, all we have to say is they did a lot, Eddie, for raises.
But let me get back to the matter at hand here, and we do appreciate the comments. It's been a, a labor of love, so to speak. But in, in any event, just some closing comments, I'm not going to go through all of this stuff, but they, they did make some adjustment, adjustments for enrollment. I think they recognize that the governor and his team's efforts to diversify our state's economy and getting Tesla and others to come is starting to pay off. And so they recognize that if they don't adjust their enrollment numbers, then they're just going to have to make a tech, technical adjustment and put more money towards school districts in two years. So you might as well just get it done now. And so they're, they're bumping up their enrollment estimates, and we were an active part of that discussion as well, so, and rightfully so. In terms of the categorical funding, I've got a whole list here, a page and a half, I'm not going to do that. I mean, it, it's the same things that we've been talking about. I think the big things that the, the, the governor's proposed a whole host of things for, from Reed by grade three, which we've been talking about, to no new social worker and licensed mental health, to career and technical ed. Mike touched on, on some of that in terms of what's going on with CSR, to Nevada Ready 21, to turnaround, to gifted and talented, expansion of the Zoom school funding, new victory schools, a, a special education contingency fund, expansion of Full Day K phased in over a two-year period of time. So by fiscal year 17, all of our schools will be fully funded for Full Day K, RPDP and so on and so forth. They, some, in some cases followed all the governor's recommendations to what they wanted to do. In other cases, they made some technical adjustments for, for some things that are happening somewhere else, where some doubling up might be taking place. In some cases, they said no, I think only in one case, really, the RPDP. And in some cases, they cut some of the funding. So, and I can go through each and every one of those with you, but I don't know that it's going to change anything. At the end of the day, it's back to what Mike and I have been talking about. We need to see all of the technical pieces of this. This is going to be a challenge for the department to administer, and it's also going to be a challenge for us. In some cases, we're going to have to file grant applications to get some of this new funding, present plans, see what the funding means, what can we maybe possibly move out of our general fund over to some of these new categorical funds if they're not going to be considered supplanting that type of stuff. And we just don't know those details today. So I think the news is, it is good news, we just don't know all the details. So I'll kind of finish where we started, which is our recommendation to you is that we adopt the final budget with the technical adjustments that Mike talked about that we can make today and move forward from there.
Yes.
I know you mentioned, if I heard you correctly, and thank you, Tom, that was very helpful, that the sunset taxes, you all were, you, you took that leap of faith and, and it was a good leap, or at least we think it is. I mean, we're optimistic. So that was what you, you did incorporate that into the current budget as presented.
Correct.
Any of the others that you mentioned, the room tax, the CSR, any of those, did you, you haven't incorporated those?
Room tax was part of that as well. The room tax and the, and the, and the increased LSST were, those have been in place for quite a period of time, so we took the leap of faith. And the room tax was always committed to education anyway, it's just a matter of, it was supposed to be in addition to, but what the legislature ended up doing is putting it in place of. So it was always committed to the school districts, so it would have been really hard for them to take it away.
Okay.
So it's, so it, it will continue. So of the 800 million, give or take, that the governor's recommended, those two items, sunset, the LSST and the room tax, we built the budget based on those two. We, we haven't done anything in terms of the categorical funding or the additional per pupil amounts that we talked about, because we just don't feel like we're in a position to do that yet.
Well, that's my, that's my second question, which is in light of what we understand, or at least what I understand, I think as you've explained, the categorical funding will, will, if it is passed, if, if the different ones, depending on which ones are adopted, they're going to be by grant. So I'm, I'm curious about how you're viewing the possibility of modifying our budget in light of that process, because we won't know by the end of June, when we have to file our final budget, what the status of any of those applications will be. So I'm just kind of curious how you're thinking about that, just to understand.
And Krista may want to chime in, but generally speaking, for some of them, like Zoom schools is an example, that's an expansion of an existing program. So we've already got the foundation in place for the, our share of the 50 million that's already occurring there. They're at, looking at adding, I think, another 7 million or so for, for us in the Zoom schools. So we'll look at what the, the process is for that, file an application and, and a plan. And I don't know if you want to jump in, Krista?
We've identified the next round of schools that would benefit from that funding.
Right. And it will depend if, if it's also going to be formula or competitive based, which we don't know yet, which ones are going to be formula and which ones are going to be competitive.
Some may be formula.
Some of them may be formula as well, so we'll have to get that. But we'll be as aggressive as possible, obviously, with the, with the competition.
If it's formula, is that based upon head count, enrollment?
It could be based on anything. It could be based on free and reduced lunch, it could be on the number of students, so we just have to wait and see.
Question. Interim finance, do we ever go to them when something gets left out?
We have been in front of interim finance on issues. It could be if we've, if we've done something wrong and we need to make a clerical correction, or it could be some additional fundings. There, there, at times, we are asked to go to interim finance. It could be grant related, it could be district general fund related.
So we can?
Yes.
Okay.
If we're requested to do so.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing to get comments from the public. I do not have any cards. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to have input into the budget? How about you guys in the back? I know you're making up credits, maybe.
[laughing]
And you all, and you, and you all look like you take calculus, so maybe you could come up here and tell us what we did wrong in our budget. No? I take that as a no.
Boo.
Okay, seeing no one approach the mics or want to make comment, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. Yes?
Just another question.
Okay.
Just some of the additional, and I really appreciate the information in the staff report on the different programs, the additional pieces, I think it was 2.9 million that you, that, that we added to the original budget. And one of the things I just wanted to clarify, because I know there's a section on moving grant positions to the general fund, and then I just wanted to clarify the family graduation advocates and the re-engagement specialists, those are new positions or they would, are they also grant funded positions?
They're existing positions that would be not funded, that we need to move over, otherwise we wouldn't have them.
Because, well, it's just not under the grant funded positions, so I just wasn't clear on that and just the way it was laid out, so I wanted to clarify. If they were grant funded positions?
Right, they would go away if we did not fund them.
I just wanted to make that, make, make sure that, since it wasn't, they weren't together, so.
Is that it? Is that it?
For a moment.
Okay, well, okay.
So are there possible deficit solutions? So, are there possible deficit solutions? How are we gonna prioritize?
Sure, I, I would, and Mike can jump in here, I, I would say if you look at that list of thirty-four million dollars, I think the first two-thirds of that are things that we can easily do, that's, that totals almost nineteen-and-a-half million dollars, so that's the, that's the low-hanging fruit, if you will, for lack of better choices of words. Again, it's our intention, and based on what we're hearing, that if, as we incorporate what we're learning from the legislature, that we won't have to go to the bottom third of the draconian issues that we don't want to touch, so, I mean, that's a simple, simple prioritization, if you will, did you want to add to that, or?
Yeah, we tried to put it together somewhat of a prioritized manner, from highest to lo, highest priority at the bottom to lowest at the top, so if we get additional revenue, which this adware, that's a real calculation, we, we got our final revenue adjustment from the Department of Taxation, so we can add that, that means we get eight-hundred-seventy-three-thousand more, so that would offset, so those would be pretty much givens, why wouldn't we do that unless we wanted to put it in and spend it on something else, but.
So I'll specifically say our intention is not to affect school safety, school walk zones, or increased class sizes in grades four through twelve, I think that's what you want me to say.
And I think clearly we have globally said, anything that impacts achievement, we talk about every child by name and face to graduation, we are trying to stay away from that, however, we still have to provide you with opportunities of budget savings.
And then I'd be remiss if I didn't say, the legislature still has to do its part too, so that's why those are on the list, so if things go south, and I'm not anticipating that they are, but if, if they did, then, then that's why those are on the list, so they're, we can't just take them off the list at this point, because that would be very irresponsible of us at this point, so, again, it's, we're not trying to scare anybody, but we've got to be realistic, we, we put a plan in front of you, and some of those things are, are, aren't good, but we need, we need some help in order to, to make sure that we don't have to go there, so.
At one of the previous budget meetings, I made reference to the criteria that we use to identify priorities around this, and I know we referenced the strategic plan and anything that impacts students, both of those to me are valuable, but they're also really broad, because just about, I'd say, two-thirds of the list impacts students in some way.
Some way.
So I think part of what we'll have to really look at, once we have all the numbers and make those hard decisions, is what do we really mean by impact students, and which of the things that currently are in support of our strategic plan are the priorities? Because I think everything we're doing falls within the strategic plan, so I don't know if either of those really help me in terms of criteria.
I guess we should say directly impact the classroom.
Okay.
One extra kid in the classroom makes a huge difference, or two extra kids, like when we talk directly classroom instruction, those would be last, then lift, and safety issues, like walking to school, those are at the bottom, the other things, everything we do impacts kids to some degree, but we talk directly classroom impacts on the teacher and teaching and learning.
I just like this, and that's the reason I'm bringing it up, because it's really good for us to clarify what those priorities are and state those, just so that we're clear on what those priorities are and we all understand that.
Any other discussion?
No, I was just going to move that we adopt the budget.
Uh, why, okay, the, the budget final?
The, yes. Tenor motion, I can't, thank you. I move, wait a minute, someone that's gonna see is gonna help, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the changes made to the tentative budget as provided by staff and approves the final budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries unanimously, six to nothing with Mr. Smith absent.
I guess I would say too, as, as much as I appreciate, first of all, great job, guys, as usual.
Thank you.
In all your work here, and in, and in Carson, and you help, you help, for people like me, that's our first time through, we really, you really help make it understandable. The other thing I would say is I appreciate your saying that the first third of the list we could do rather easily, or I guess, it doesn't mean that it's an easy thing to not have, I think it's more of a, keeps it further away from the classroom and not impacts students directly, and then we get down to the bottom part of the list, then we start having an impact, and so that's, I just, I don't want to make sense, we can just get rid of that, and there's no problem, we can just save that and keep it pushing, because I don't, I think those things are vital to the work that, that's being done in the district every day.
One of these days, it's my hope that schools will have all the money they need, and the Air Force and the Navy will have to have a big sale to make an aircraft carrier.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Uh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, do you want to take a break, or this next one shouldn't, maybe shouldn't take too long, huh?
Move on. We're good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to item four-point-oh-one, discussion and preliminary approval of draft board manual ninety-one-twenty, Board Governance Handbook, Lisa Scurry.
I would like one.
Oh, I would love one. Hi, I have, my printer was out of ink, so I didn't run the whole thing.
Did you get your forms signed?
We can change it if we need to.
Huh? Oh, okay, grab one.
Come get it right now. Oh, give it.
The vice, the vice president loves to sign those. You don't have a form?
He's getting an agenda.
Which, which, which class is your?
Um, government.
Which, who's your teacher?
Shoe wire.
So where do you need me to slide?
Oh, right there.
You're welcome. All this knowledge you got.
Yeah, I'm glad you could stay awake.
It's the reason we're here, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
See, they gotta have that class before they graduate, so.
Mr. Clark's class? You're right.
Okay, Lisa Scurry and Kristen McNeil, Chief of Staff.
Lisa Scurry, Policy Coordinator.
Right.
We're gonna move from, we're moving from the money boy's labor of love to my labor of love, I think. So, real quick, I asked JJ to, or Mrs. Batchelder to put the, the manual up on the screen, because I do want to thank our communications office, they developed, or they designed the cover for this manual, and which I really like, and I think it speaks to the professionalism that we're trying to do, so thank you to them. Um, so, a little history as into, as to what this is, about fifteen months ago, I think, we started talking about the, the idea of putting together both a governance handbook and also an orientation manual, we'd had those things sort of informally, but this was an attempt to put it all together, so through Mrs. Batchelder's work and Chief of Staff McNeil, the orientation manual was done last fall, and the governance handbook has been a continuing project. An ad hoc committee was formed last spring, which was Trustee McClory, Trustee Rosenberg, and Trustee Roggerio, at the turn of this year, with Trustee Roggerio moving on to safe and healthy schools work, Trustee Frankel was kind enough to join our, our little group, and we kept that work going. The man, the handbook itself is a compilation, really, of all of your governance bylaws, what we tried to do was encompass what is in the nine-thousand series, which are really the, sort of the day-to-day operational things for that a board would follow, we broke it up into seven standards, or seven areas, one was the philosophy of board leadership, two is a culture of respect, then there was the vision, mission, and core beliefs, based on your strategic plan, then there's the standards of professional con, or, standards of professional practice, which I think is really the meat of the document, section on constituent services, oversight management, and finally, a small section on board orientation, which is really sort of a segue into the larger manual. So what we did then was we took, we used some national practices that are happening in other districts, some things from the National School Boards Association, and then also your existing policies, and we started to put this together. I have, since the last copy that you received, I have put in the references to existing policies and some existing laws that are relevant, so that we could make sure that we're not in conflict with anything, and then there are some additional pieces, then we've talked about some policies that we might want to explore in the future, like a culture of respect policy or constituent services, so those policies don't necessarily exist yet, but we have sort of a framework started here, and I'm, if I'm, do you want to add anything before I, I'm, I'm just rolling, aren't I? It's, it's just, it's impressive, really.
I'm tired.
So.
Thinking again, oh, God.
I had a cup of coffee before I came in here.
I'll jump in if I need to.
Um, so, this is a living document, so I don't want anybody to look at it and go, yeah, there's a lot of work to do, there is a lot of work to do, and there's always going to be a lot of work to do.
Of course.
And I think over the next year, as we really delve even more into the nine-thousand series, is, that's, what, three of you are brand-new to the board, so we haven't even really gone over the nine-thousand series with you at all, because they were revised before you joined the board, so.
What is the nine-thousand series?
Sorry, those would be your governing documents, those are like board policy nine-zero-zero-one, which is your governing mission, nine-zero-zero-six, which is your duties and responsibilities. We haven't, except for a little bit in orientation, even really discussed them, so I think that's going to have to occur, you know, we're, we're just about done with our, the, all of the policies, and then I wanted to start back with that, so I think as we do that, there's going to be amendments coming, but my hope is that we can go ahead and, and talk about adopting this, get it going, I would like to follow the same process we do with policies, and put it out for a fifteen-day com, or fifteen-day review for public comment, and then bring it back to you, probably at the end of June, asking for final, assuming you give me preliminary tonight, and then, like I said, it's, it's a living document, as we're revising policies or adopting new policies, or there are just things that you think are missing or want to add to, obviously, we'll continue that work, so that's, that's sort of my speech, if there's anything we want to specifically talk about, or any direction you want to give me?
Yes.
I just know that there are sections that are still under development, in fact, there's, it says section under development for number eleven.
Then I gave you the wrong.
Page thirty-two.
I thought I fixed them all, then I gave you the wrong copy.
You know, that is there, you're right, and I left that on purpose, because I wanted to make sure that we talked about that. Board of Trustees self-evaluation is something that we've talked about, but we really haven't gone any further, and I think, from what I've understand, the board has kind of been talking about, do we want to do like a governance work session, or do we want to bring somebody in, so I left that there as a, to remind myself, and I don't know that you all are far enough in your conversations to actually amend that, so I would probably suggest that we take it out, and that's a section that we would come back to, once you all develop what that would look like. Makes sense. Is that?
So, any other?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion, or?
I shall make a motion, and thank you, Lisa, for all your hard work on this, because I know it's been a labor of love, maybe, love, I don't know. It was, and it was, and a lot of people worked on this, so it wasn't just me, so. Well, I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed adoption of Board Manual ninety-one-twenty, Board Governance Handbook, and initiates the fifteen-day public review process.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same signal, carries unanimously, like the record show, thank you very much, both of you.
Lisa, just before, leave before this, Lisa, so next steps on this, it goes out for the fifteen-day review.
Yeah, I'm going to post it to our public document review page, and I'm also going to send it out, just like we do all of our other policies, and then when I do that, IT gets that email, and they also post it to our Infinite Campus parent portal, so that your parents can see how, how your, your constituents, and then the next meeting, we would be able to bring it back for final approval, I'm gonna get the date wrong, but the, the second meeting in June, is it the twenty-fourth, or something like that? Twenty-third, that's close, so we would bring it back then for final approval, and then, like I said, in the fall, we'll start auditing all of your governing bylaw documents, and then we can start working on it all over again. Does that work?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your work.
You bet.
Okay, Board Member Request for Future Items on the Agenda. Okay, Public Comment, did you want to comment again? Okay. Don't, don't go out here and say that, Mary, you wouldn't let me talk. Okay, the next meeting will be May twenty-six, twenty-fifteen, at two PM in this board room. We are adjourned.
Great.